This was based upon unsupported claims of poor health due to geothermal emissions, and not one claim was scientifically supported. It's too bad they couldn't have waited until after the presentation today. It was never proved that these health claims were supported in fact, based upon scientific retrospective studies. If that had been the case, I would definitely be in favor of the proposed buyout. Unfortunately, there were no scientific studies on unsupported claims.
Hold on one second. Ms. Rafferty, do you want it?
Mr. Chairman, I've read Mr. Rankin's testimony, and I caution you that if you're on Bill 256, please, in order to make sure that we do this properly, and that you and us are properly covered by our sunshine law, please, address the two presentations that were made today. Please don't read the testimony that clearly is headed, letter regarding repeal of 256.
Okay.
Okay? Please, it's important that we do this properly.
I understand.
So that clearly we're not held in contempt for, by any error, not due to our own part. Please, address the two presentations.
I understand. Okay. And in addressing the two presentations today, it was two dynamic, wonderful, great presentations. Clearly, we saw that the geothermal plant in Puna was clean energy, not the opposite that had been supported. And clearly, if we are going to be able to lower our energy costs in this state, if we are going to be able to have sustainable energy, then I have to say that the geothermal plant in Puna is clearly clean energy, and as thus should be supported by the council and the citizens. And it would sure be nice, sure would be nice, if down the road, we could look for our lower electric bills and less dependence upon fossil fuel sources. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Okay, Mr. Lozano, if you can hit the button there and identify yourself, and let us know which items you'd be testifying on.
I'll be mostly safety, 743 and 743.1.
Okay, please proceed.
Aloha, Big Island.
Point of order. Some of you are soft-spoken, unlike myself, and you need to get really close to that microphone so I can hear you.
How's that?
Wonderful.
Okay. Thank you, Brandon. Aloha, Big Island County Council Representatives. You represent me and my family. My name is Roy Lozano. I'm a chiropractor in Pohona and have been for the last nine years. I also have a degree in biology. I also live on the outer edge of the one-mile perimeter of the geothermal plant. Last Thursday, I had the opportunity with a group of concerned citizens to take a tour of the Puna geothermal venture and to meet Mr. Mike Calacini and some of his chief officers. Mike and his staff answered all our questions graciously and in great detail, and showed great patience with us. Mahalo, Mike. What I took away from the tour is that they are doing a great job of what they are doing, smartly, knowledgeably, and with great concern for the responsibility and seriousness of running a geothermal plant. I, for one, am glad they are there. That's the problem that I see. It's a geothermal plant in a residential area. For years, I have used the saying, whatever man makes breaks, and I've found this to be true in just about everything I have owned or seen made by man, whether it is an automobile or a television, a blender or a toaster, a deep-water oil rig, or a nuclear power plant, or a geothermal plant, our geothermal plant. And here's the problem with that. When a geothermal plant breaks or fails, everything changes forever. It is not if the plant will have an accident, it's when. They have had a number of accidents over the years, but none of them life-changing. Thank you, Mike, and thank you, Bob. Do you remember being glued to the television just two years ago and seeing our oceans change forever right before our eyes as we watched BP's deep-water drilling disaster, not knowing if the men responsible for this broken mess could fix it? I remember how I felt for the beautiful oceans being dirtied by this substance that should never have been released from the seabed, and all the lives affected dramatically forever. I know the concerns I have knowing that the radioactive air and waste from Fukushima earthquake and tsunami that occurred a year ago is on its way here now, and I'm concerned about the other radioactive holding tanks in Fukushima that have weakened, could be eighty-five times more lethal than Chernobyl. And even more disturbing is their lack or inability to solve the problem. Fukushima sits on the chain, Ring of Fire, as the Hawaiian Islands do, and this is a very unstable geological area. And then we have the Puna geothermal venture in my backyard, an energy plant that is an accident waiting to happen. Remember, whatever man makes, breaks. If you could show me something that doesn't, I'd like to see that. No matter what some experts or attorneys will tell us and claim to have proof about, they cannot guarantee an accident will not occur. Even the state of Hawaii has wiped its hands clean of responsibility should an accident occur. They have opted out of liability. They leave the responsibility to the corporation, and we have seen how that plays out. Hydrogen sulfide, arsenic, radon, and a slew of other heavy metal toxins from the Middle Earth, toxic chemicals used in the daily operations, most with EPA need to know cautions. This geothermal explorative venture is far from green, sustainable, or renewable. Plenty of poisons in this enterprise. When I asked Mr. Calacini, what is his greatest concern, in terms of safety, he said it's the thirty thousand gallons of pentane that are on the project. When the attorney for Ormat said that no fossil fuels are being used, that's not true. There's thirty thousand gallons of fossil fuels in the form of pentane, a highly, it's the working fuel they use to create the condensation to run the generators, the steam generators, a highly flammable and toxic pectoral chemical product used in all steam creation process, in the steam creation process, to produce, to turn the plant's turbines. I hope you all are learning something right about now. I get the impression you care about the Ohana and the Ina, and I know I do. A few years ago, they had a small accident with this stuff and lost all their equipment adjacent to the fire. When they talked about the lightning bolt that threw the system off the grid, what happened was there was backup pressure. It blew a seal, and there was a fire of a very small amount of the pentane. Okay? It wasn't thirty thousand gallons, but just imagine that. This stuff, this pentane, combines with many of the other chemicals and toxins utilized and released from the geothermal ventures, and can be ignited by human air, or mechanical air, or a lightning strike, or an earthquake, hurricane, or lava flow. It is a real possibility, and this is why Mike and his crew takes their job seriously, is a dangerous activity, and a large-scale accident is totally possible. Just the unexpected or unplanned event creating the perfect conditions for a huge environmental disaster. In Ormat's own video, they say that their geothermal plant is a compromise for what the Hawaii people's needs and way to produce those needs. I don't like the compromise myself. This is why Puna geothermal venture must be restrained and, in reality, relocated or shut down after a thorough updated environmental impact study, and a study to evaluate geothermal versus solar farms, wind farms, hydro energy, smart grids, and of course, the easiest conservation. Ormat, take the financial loss now by doing the right thing and foregoing lengthy losing battle that will cost you millions in legal settlements. Go green. Right now, you are not a good and a wanted neighbor. In fact, thirty-seven percent of Hawaii's energy needs are from electric water heaters. Thirty-seven percent of Hawaii's electric needs are from electric water heaters. We go solar water heaters, and we save thirty-seven percent of our energy right there. Passive law disallowing incandescent lights coming to Hawaii, we'd probably take the percentage up to fifty percent.
Please summarize. Am I done with nine minutes? Actually, you know, I should be really clear on this. There's three communications. You're only talking on one, and actually, by law, you're supposed to have three minutes per item. Sounds like you're only talking about Puna geothermal, so technically, you ran over by three minutes, because I don't hear you talking about IDG or about Department of Health in terms of the questions. Okay. If you want to talk about the other ones, we'll give you additional time.
Only that I agree that there should be a study then, before we go on further with geothermal.
Updated.
Yeah. In terms of wind, solar, wave, all the different technologies.
Okay.
And maybe then, we might want you as a neighbor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna call the next two testifiers, Barbara Brown and John Olson, if you could please come to the table, and then Pohona. Barbara, you can take your two testifiers. Yeah, please remind them that, let us know what communication they're speaking on and when they transition, so we can reset the timer. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Yoshimoto. Our first testifier is Greg Owen. He'll be speaking on, commenting on Communication 743.1, representing himself.
Good morning from Moku'opuna. I have been a resident of Puna for thirty-nine years. During this time, twice, I have asked for the attention of the Department of Health, to no avail. This is, that is why I question their credibility. Just last year, I went to the DOH to report I had found hundreds of spent bullets on the government beach road where I live. Hundreds of spent bullets. It turns out, the county had been dumping toxic landfill gravel contaminated with lead from the bullets. For decades, I have been walking this road breathing the potentially toxic dust. I reported this to the Department of Health and asked them to test me for lead exposure. The Department of Health gave me the runaround. Also, on occasion, I get splashed by the pesticides and fungicides from the poison trucks from the papaya fields as I walk the government beach road. It turns out, according to a front-page article in the Hawaii Tribune Herald, Hawaii uses ten times more pesticides per acre than the national average, and three times more than California, the next highest. Puna, Lower Puna, is literally drenched in pesticides. Widespread abuse and violation of federal law is rampant. So I go to the Department of Health for this matter, to no avail. This, only in part, is why I question, question the credibility of the Department of Health. Just where is the government? I will be asking State Auditor Marion Higa to investigate the State Department of Health as regards to geothermal. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony.
Our next testifier is Steve Bolhurt. He is commenting on Communications 743, 743.1, and 764, representing himself.
Aloha. I'm Steve Bolhurt, a retired United Church of Christ pastor, an author, and the Hawaii liaison for the Great Panthers. I am very concerned about the mayor's plan to hook the Big Island up to Oahu and supply their energy needs through increased geothermal development all over Lower Puna, which is where I live and where I moved to because of its beautiful rural, peaceful environment that helps my contemplative life. I don't want geothermal plants springing up here and there, especially after hearing the reports of my fellow Puna citizens who have been affected by the existing plant. I listened to the PGV presentation this morning, and I thought it was a very excellent presentation meant to be very reassuring, but I don't trust them. I listened to the IDG presentation, and I was very relieved that they didn't want to contribute to this one-hundred-megawatt cable plan to Oahu, but were more concerned with developing energy for the Big Island. I don't know them, and so I don't trust them either. I feel that the people of Lower Puna have been manipulated and exploited by people in power for many, many years, and I am tired of seeing poorer neighborhoods being subjected to industrial development and pollution with no concern for local health care and the needs of the people, having to deal with noise and air pollution in a pristine environment that we love. And so I asked the council to do as the presenter from IDG advised, and take this issue seriously and protect the people of this area and the island. I've done some research on my own regarding geothermal energy, and I read that drilling in Switzerland caused earthquakes resulting in millions of dollars' worth of damage. Magma came through a wellhead in Iceland, and there was a major blowout in Australia also. So it's not just PGV that is deficient in meeting safety needs, but as Dr. Lozano said, all material things are subject to failure, and therefore, operating under normal situations, as the director of PGV said, may rarely occur. What are normal situations? And how often does an abnormal event occur that endangers the residents? I'm not an expert in any of this, and I've just recently become involved in this issue over the past month or two as it became more publicly known. I think it would have been good of our governor and state legislature to first consult with the people of Puna before designating us as their energy center. And it seems like a big cheap energy rush to get this geothermal energy from us because it's the closest to the surface here, but it also makes it the most dangerous to deal with, because we're dealing with volatile volcanic forces that we admittedly don't understand. And this technology is relatively recent and untested in many ways, especially in a geologically unstable environment like this. And rather than using Puna as an experimental station, I think we should look at other energy options. I myself am on offer it solar, and that's a very good option for us and anywhere in Hawaii. And it doesn't include transmission cables and transmission statements and electric power lines all over the island. We supply our own needs. I think the Big Island should be working for its own independent energy sustainability using solar, tides, wind, biomass, whatever things are available before geothermal, which is getting an awful lot of funding from our national government, which I don't trust either. And there's all this money going into it. They've been researching it here in Hawaii for thirty or forty years, and yet, this has not really been discussed with the people. And whenever the people get to speak, they're largely opposed to the whole venture, and yet, in the past, they've been ignored. And yet, I see perhaps this council is willing to listen to the people and take our needs into concern. It would be awfully refreshing to see government for, by, and of the people again, rather than for, by, and of the corporations who give the handouts to the legislators to do what they want.
Summarize.
So I ask you to have integrity and put the needs of the people first. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Barbara, were those your two testifiers? Okay, we're gonna transition back here to Hilo. Our next testifier is Barbara Brown, testifying on Communications 743, 743.1, and 764. You have three minutes for each item. Morning.
Good morning. My name is Barbara Brown. I'm talking about 743. But really, I'm gonna just speak with emotion, because I live within one mile of that geothermal plant. I sleep with my head on my pillow and the windows open every night within one mile of that geothermal plant. I hear it all night long. It's roaring. It sounds like there's a jet engine parked at the end of my driveway. Yes, they say that's only the drilling, but we just can hear the rumbling of the plant all night long, and they're saying that that's within the allowable decibels. But my question for all of you is, do any of you sleep within one mile of that goddamn plant? Do you know what it's actually doing to the people living there? You're all making all these decisions, but do any of you actually live next to that plant? And we came here in 2003. We bought land. We lived on Maui for a long time. We were seeking a rural life, a safe place to raise our children, away from the city life. The first night we get there, and I'm going, wow, what is that noise? If I knew that that noise was there, I would not have bought it. Okay, but we were not living in a legal structure, so then now, a couple years later, we build our house. We're issued a permit. Does anybody ever tell us that we're living next to a factory? No. They allow us to build our house, to invest everything we have into our life, plant our trees, raise our children. They issued us a permit. We had to pay a lot of money for that permit. The people came out and inspected our house to make sure that we built it the way that they wanted us to build it, way overbuilt and anything you ever needed in Hawaii. We went along with all those rules. You didn't tell us that we were living next to a factory that was not safe for us. We've lost the value of our property. Nobody wants to come live near us. Our taxes are low, yes, but the, they say, oh yeah, we'll buy you out, one hundred and thirty percent. That doesn't even meet half of our mortgage, people. It's nothing. It's nothing. You're offering us nothing. You're offering us to go, go somewhere else, give up our, everything we worked up for the last nine years, and go be poor somewhere because we've invested everything, and you're gonna pay us like twenty-five cents on what we've put into it. And we're in lava zone one. Lava zone one. You're building a factory where you're drilling into the earth in lava zone one. We can't even get a farm loan to help us do anything agricultural, because nobody will invest anything in lava zone one. And I'm on, I'm on the airplane, I'm reading the Hanaho magazine, and they're saying that ecological tourism is the big upcoming money for people like us out in the country. We can't have people come out and look at our land because there's a roar going on in the background. I'm not gonna invest any time in showing people walking around our beautiful farm growing all the land that's supposedly the food basket of the state. Nobody's gonna come here.
Ms. Brown, you can move to your next topic. Thank you.
My next topic is, you guys come sleep next to that thing, and you make the decisions depending on how you wanna live. And that's not a good thing. Oh.
Thank you. Good morning, Ms. Olson. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Starting with 743 communication. The Ormat-PGV presentation was quite, quite good, as far as the part of the story that they presented. It was accurate. System is a closed-loop system. Lubrication system on your car is a closed-loop system, but there's always that little drop of oil on the floor when you back out in the morning. The Titanic was designed as an unsinkable ship. We know how that worked out. Just because it was designed as a closed-loop system does not mean that it isn't, therefore, and we know that it's not. If you go to the EPA website and look at their inventory of hazardous stuff that they require reporting on, in the last quarter of 2011, PGV lost four hundred and forty-three thousand pounds of pentane somewhere in a closed-loop system. What else got away? It gets us to monitoring. If you put the monitoring in such places as they will not actually be in the wind flow, or they will be too high in the air, or any number of things that you can do to a monitoring system that you do not wish to have monitor, then you don't get anything. The Department of Health is complicit in this. The State Department of Health here, and it's not just on this island, look at what the State Department have done to people on other islands, Oahu, most notably with its actions over the monitoring systems of its wastewater treatment facilities and air issues. The list is endless, can't even go there. Drilling, yes, they have not drilled a whole lot of wells, but ask them how many wells they've had to recase and how often they have to recase them. Have them explain to you why it is that they have this extensive recasing and monitoring program. That was caused by the community. We proved that they were leaking into the groundwater, and they came out, they fined them heavily, as they did with the pentane issue. The list of things that they have been fined for over the years goes on and on. State Department of Health, noise. Again, you set up a monitoring, a monitoring system that does not report, and you set a criteria. If I told you that I could make at least three incidences of noise in excess of one hundred and thirty dB, that's like standing behind a jet airplane taking off. I could do three of those in an hour and not violate the noise criteria. That's all true. Probably the most egregious thing here is the response plan. I won't go into that. You got copies of it. You can read as well as I can. Moving along to 764, Communicate 764. I don't doubt their intention, and I don't think it's all bad. But I think that they are, the kindest thing I can say is that they're ignorant. They believe that they can drill and set a thousand or twelve-hundred foot of something in the ground to extract heat. That's the story that I've heard, and that would be benign. When PGV drilled KS-7, they had a, what the industry refers to as a kick, at seventeen hundred feet, meaning that the resource came up the wellbore, blew the string, that's the steel pipe that does the drilling, out of the wellbore, injured two workers on the drill rig. Fortunately, in this incident, the blowout preventer functioned and closed. PGV abandoned and plugged that well immediately, because as the systems go, that would be an uncontrollable depth for the resource that's involved. Yet, they jumped right out there and drilled KS-8 and blew the hell out of themselves. You just sometimes can't figure out what people are thinking. And in this case, you gotta ask yourself, what do they think? They must not know, because you can't be that dumb if you knew. Yesterday's paper, Volcano Watch. The man politely as he could told you that you were crazy to even think about it. You're taking the energy future of this island and rolling the dice. In 1993, when I went up and talked to Reggie Okamura up at the, you know, you want the true story, you go to, you go find somebody who doesn't have a dog in the fight, and Reggie was the guy. So what's the story? Can you do this? Why would you not do it? After four hours of conversation, he answered all our questions, and I told him where I lived, and just smiled at me, patted me on the back, and he said, I'll promise you seventy-two hours notice. I'll give you seventy-two hours to get out of Dodge. That's where we're gonna put our electrical future. You're the people who are elected.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. I'm gonna ask the next two testifiers here to move to the table. It's Robin Weed and Tracy Hitchcock. And Barbara, your next two testifiers in Pohona.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our next testifier is Toby Hayfield. She will be commenting on Communications 743, 743.1, and 764, representing herself.
Hi, good morning, County Council. Oh my God, this was quite an earful today. And I wanna say that I don't like being a yo-yo. Civil Defense came out and said, we are all yo-yos. You are on your own. I didn't know. I didn't know I was a yo-yo. Anyhow, this yo-yo has helped elect you to represent us and protect us, and now, especially after mid-train- after Ms. Trask's speech, for you to stand up for us. Uh, the county must involve themselves now, and the mayor, past, the past mayors have not done this. I bet they're hiding under a table right now after that talk from Ms. Trask. Uh, we need someone who is knowledgeable and can stand up for us and put the county energy system in the plan and on the map. Uh, this unsafe, unhealthy development of geothermal is unacceptable for Puna, and financially, this is unfeasible for us, uh, in Hawaii, whether we're indigenous or not. Fifteen more years? We're gonna, we're gonna pay more than anybody else so that people can take, uh, wheelbarrows of money away from here? Come on. There has to be a way to take the PUC by the scruff of their neck and change this. This is not okay for us, these kind of rates. And Helco, Schmelco, Hiko, Chico, and Miko can just, you know, take themselves out of it because we are, we are not gonna be happy with this kind of situation. And what? Put solar first. Put solar on everything, then some of these other, uh, wind power and everything, and just boot geothermal last because we are not gonna pay for a ten-billion-dollar extension course to Oahu, and they don't even have solar on all their buildings. Come on. What else? Uh, the other thing is, geothermal is just another corporate imperialistic bailout for this Hiko, Schmiko, Chico, and Miko. Uh, this is, this is, has got to stop now. Uh, each island can have an affordable grid. Um, I'm sure Oahu can have a, a, quite an affordable grid if they got their solar up and going. Um, I can't imagine us waiting fifteen more years, uh, with the PUC. Uh, I'm gonna start calling them tomorrow, and I have called the Department of Health. I wanna say that this is an untruth that they say nobody has called to complain. This island has a geothermal hotline. In fact, show the number now. There is the number of the geothermal hotline for Department of Health. Ed Yamamoto, God bless his real soul, answers this phone and tries to figure out an answer after he calls Honolulu. You know, Lisa Young, uh, called her a number of times. Uh, Gary Gill's office, called him a number of times. Don't, don't get any reasonable answers back, but for them to say nobody's called them is not true. This, this, this number is in, uh, the telephone directory as well as this one. I like this one. This is a good number, nine-one-one on the N there. Here. Yeah. Zero-nine-one-one. They'll call you back someday, you know, after you've got the gas mask and you're running for the hills. I, I, I don't know, um, how, how we're gonna deal with all of this. Oh, wait, I have one last thing. I mean, Royal Purple Munt? And what, all the rest of this, I mean, thousands of gallons of petroleum product going down the hole with everything else? And where is it coming out? Nobody knows. We want monitoring. We want water testing at the hot pond. We want water testing at Green Lake. I'm convinced a hundred percent that something is going in the lava tubes, the big one by my house. I, and Department of Health says, oh, we don't do that. We don't monitor that. At a distance from the plant, there need to be some monitors in those lava tubes and see if any gases or God knows what else is loose down there, you know? It, it's just, it just, I, I could read a million more things, but I'm not going to because I know there's a lot of people that wanna talk. So instead, I made this. Whoops, wait, wait. Other way. Okay, here, here. This is a gigantic geothermal condom. Just put this over the whole thing and, uh, provide it. Do this. Nice.
Our next testifier in Pahoa is Jonavu Valdezar. She will be commenting on Communication 743, 743.1, and 764, representing herself.
Hi. Um, I'm just commenting today on what was said today, um, when Mike Mel, Mel, Mike Bay, Pelatini, um, talked about how the community is grown around PGV. Um, we've heard a lot of testimonies from the community that has grown around PGV. Um, I don't think that these people are making these things up. I don't think that they're making up that there's noise or that they have health issues. A lot of what I heard today was about, you know, who do we trust? I trust my neighbors that stand up and, and give these complaints. I really do. I don't, I think they have better things to do than come here and talk about this, you know? When I heard the ORMAP presentation, I was sitting back thinking, well, I'm sure the people who built the, uh, uh, nuclear, uh, facilities at Fukushima, I'm sure they said things like this too, you know? Um, they made this presentation, and, um, so I'm listening and I'm wondering, well, do I really, do I really trust these people? So then, I hear the representative from IDG, and she is saying so many things about this company that, I mean, she's talking about a congressional investigation, you know? And we're supposed to trust their reports? You know, I don't. Um, I am, uh, so appalled at our mayor's behavior if all of these things are true. I mean, I heard that he said that he didn't know quite recently about the underwater cable. I thought, well, then he's really ignorant or he's lying. Um, I don't trust him at all. I, I do trust, uh, the, I somewhat trust the majority that's on the council right now because they have shown sensitivity for our community. They have shown it tangibly by doing action. I, I am so grateful for Chairman Ygon and what he has done. He's given hope to this community that we can get people in power and continue to have the people in power who are listening that we can really trust. Um, and I think that's our hope. Our hope is in you, um, and I trust from what, the way you've been performing, that, um, that you will do the best thing for us. I, I, um, I would like to get, I agree with the IDG presentation about getting rid of the monopoly. Um, I myself have solar. I heard, and we do have a backup generator. Um, today, I was talking to a gentleman here, and he was talking about having a wind-powered backup. So that would take care of the need for, uh, propane, which is costly. So I think that is a great idea. Uh, I don't believe that Helco is going to pass on to people who are tied into the grid all these, uh, cuts in their rates. We haven't seen any cuts. We've seen it go up, and if people believe that their rates are going down, I think that they're being gullible. Uh, we are also on, uh, this area, I mean, we live, you know, in lava zone one or lava zone two, um, and it's a volatile area. We all know that, and we cannot control Mother Nature. And I wanna say something about Pele, you know? Sometimes people say, I've heard people remark, oh, this superstition, you know? Well, we're talking about, Pele represents what I would consider like the earth, you know? And you don't wanna go messing around with Mother Nature. Um, we need to honor our mother. We all honor the earth, hopefully, uh, not just native Hawaiians, but we all have a stake in this, you know? Um, so I just trust that you'll do the right thing, and I'm grateful for this council. Very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Okay, our next testifier, Marion Higa, is Robin Weed, and she will be followed by Mr. J-